Your feet touch the ground?
Um, fairly.
Hi.
Ron, who here?
Two minutes.
I think it's still one.
Ken.
I guess.
Hey folks.
So, you wanna start with Ken?
Yeah.
All right. Sure you mean everybody, we'll call this meeting at Buckfield Select Board to Order, August twentieth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty two P M. Um, under old business, we're gonna uh, give an audit update, uh, we just wanted to set a few ground rules on that first. What's the next? Oh. Um. All right, let's go with the audit update, I didn't move the ground rules, how about that? I've been informed, but sorry. Uh, so, uh, Ron, yeah, we have Ron here, discuss the audit.
Okay, folks. You guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Cameron, do you wanna give a little prelude to this? And Karen was joining, I know she was running late, but she was gonna try to join you all.
Yeah. Uh. Do you, do you wanna flip flop with K R T real quick, or until she shows up? I don't know, because once I get started, it might take a while.
I'm, I'm good to go, I'm good to go, Cameron.
You're good to go?
Yeah.
All right, so I updated the board at previous meeting with everything that was going on, but I obviously can't recite it as good as you, you can, because you're the guy.
So he- here's where we're at, you guys, we, we've got like four audits going on. And, 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 and probably to start the, the background story, we know you had a bad experience with your last audit and spent a lot of money. And in talking with Cameron and talking with kind of the path on how we got here, you know, and, 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 and like, um, not mergers of software and information that just isn't available to be audited and, you know, and not really going back and throwing good time after bad time and having you have a similar experience as last time, paying a lot of money and getting very little in return, because the last audit you have has a disclaimer of an audit opinion. We actually reached out to our state auditor, you guys, and told Cameron that one of the options ours, let's get current. You know, let's focus on twenty three and twenty fours audit, you know, with good information that we actually have readily accessible. You know, uh, go a similar path with, you know, with an audit opinion, with a heavy management letter on what the comments are, and really get caught up in current and focus our efforts on twenty three, twenty four. Do enough due diligence for twenty one, twenty two audits, as I recall, to, you know, to really, y- y- you know, put a letter in front of you that kind of outlines all the concerns that we have. But as far as the math, the ma- the mathematics, you know, as, as the financial condition, you know, we've got better information in twenty three, twenty four. I shared with Cameron, we kind of got the state auditor's blessing to, you know, issue that qualified audit opinion, issue a management letter, outline the details so we can, you know, kind of set the story, but really get caught up in twenty three, twenty four, you all, with good, accurate financial data and that, and focus our efforts, you know, on there. Because I feel the town of Buckfield will be throwing a lot of good money after bad money, you know, to, uh, you know, to, to, to go down possible rabbit holes and really kind of arrive at the same place where you were last time, and, and, and we don't wanna go there, you all, we just don't wanna go there, we, you know, we're trying to land this, th- these, these past two audits, and a- as we said, you know, issue that opinion and focus on twenty three, twenty four, and really kind of, you know, like I say, get that math right, you all, so.
So. Yes.
So I think the question that many community members have, or that they want to be reassured of, is that from all the information you looked at, that to the best of your knowledge, nothing nefarious happened.
Yeah, we, we don't see.
We thought. We're booking anybody.
Yeah, yeah, we don't see any fraud, defalcation, we see a lot of bad practices, you all, a lot of bad accounting. You know, and, and, and really, you know, it's like starting from there, you know, I, 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 I think that you could probably spend, you, you spent a lot of money in the past, we don't want you to do it again, you know, really to, to, you know, to, you know, to, to really not get at that comfort level, where we can say one way or another. You know, that we know there's bad math, we know there's bad accounting, we've seen nothing, you know, that basically says, you know, that there's wrongdoing going on, you know, at the town of Buckfield. These have just been some very bad practices, very bad, you know, financial management, you know, as far as taking care of your books, you know, aided embedded and really kind of compounded and made worse, you know, by a, a software conversion that you all have. You know, so, so, so I think to alleviate to the best that we've seen right out there, nothing, nothing fraudulent that we see, just really bad practices and really bad accounting, so.
And it would be safe to say that, that those bad practices and bad accounting are no longer the case.
Yeah, we, we definitely see improvement, which is why I told Cameron, you all, let's focus on twenty three and twenty four, something that we can easily put our hands on, you all. You know, so that we can give you some assurances on that, that not only have the practices got better, the accountings got better, you know, and, uh, and that's where we really wanna focus all of our efforts on right now. That's where we are focusing all our efforts on right now, that's kind of like that preliminary conversation we had with Cameron that he kind of briefed you on, that's the direction that we wanna go, so.
Thank you.
And I'll say it this way too, because that's a great question. If I was a resident of the town of Buckfield, I, I look at cost, cost and cost benefit, okay? I'm not sure I'm gonna bring anything to anybody here, there's nothing you don't know already. And to be able to look and say, you know, hey, without a shadow of a doubt that we've got this issue, this issue, whether or not it points in a direction, you know, that it may, you know, that, that they say, hey, you know what, we've gotta, we, i- is this worse than a bad practice? I don't think we're gonna have enough there from what we see right now, so let's focus on good math, you know, and let's go forward, and I, I just think that's, you know, just the, the thing that I would do if I'm sitting in your chairs right now, having done this for thirty five years, you all. And I'll also say this, there's a lot of Buckfields out there, you guys, right now, you know, if you guys had a conversation with our state auditor, there's a lot of people, I, the world of government's ugly, there's a lot of people in a similar situation that you're in, and that's why it's easy for me to kind of say, and, you know, work with our state auditor to say, hey, if we were you, we know where the, the bad practices are, let, 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 let's just focus on, you know, the matters that we can control and going forward. You know, and if this happens again, well, there's other problems then, obviously, in Buckfield, but that's where I would just really focus your resources and efforts on, and, you know, as, as Cameron and I stated, we did enough due diligence, you know, in those past years, and will in twenty three and twenty four, to look at you guys in the eyes and everybody in Buckfield, you know, and say, hey, this is bad math, this is bad accounting, not fraudulent activity, and we've seen nothing of that.
Any questions from anybody attending through Zoom?
Yes, Judy.
Because the state then accept that our accounts are closed twenty or twenty seven months. It's true. We put, yes, I would, we're, we're clear with station.
So the, the question was if, uh, we were clear with the state, uh, that our accounts can be closed out for twenty one, twenty two.
Yeah, you'll, you'll get a, so by law, you're required, and, and twenty, we'll, we'll be issuing an audit report. You know, with a lengthy management letter to the state, you know, I am sure, you know, our state auditor and his group will certainly respond and say, what are you doing about it? And that's really where I think the next conversation, you know, is for twenty three and twenty four, is that the, that, that, that the improvement that you see? You know, the fact that we're able not to qualify our opinion, you know, is what you're gonna be able to give to a response for the state. Now, if this happens again, you know, post twenty three, twenty four, I think it's gonna be a different conversation, you know, that we're meeting with our state auditor on and other various regulatory agencies that exist out there, uh, uh, Department of Education, things like that, on what some of the penalties may be. You know, but, um, you know, but like I say, you know, I think that we'll be able to give, you know, the town of Buckfield the best product we can, you know, and really focus on twenty three, twenty four. You know, and move forward with some conviction and certainty about the numbers, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And we look for, I think, what we said. Cameron, what I had said too to you, and, and still this whole, I'm sorry, I couldn't physically be there tonight, you all, but I look forward as we get into the, like, the, 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 the the closure, to really get to the closure of twenty three, twenty four, to come and sit down face to face with you all and really kind of sum up, you know, all the conclusions, and more importantly, give you where your financial situation is, you know, and where the math is right now. And I think that that is a huge victory for the town of Buckfield, given the past that you've gone through, so. And if I didn't think, and if I didn't think we could do that, you all, you know, this conversation would be differently, this would be different, as I told Cameron, so.
Yes, Judy?
I just wanna say that I think we've reached this point largely, thanks to Penny Harstall, you know, yes, to you, has taken those accounts for the last couple of years, both through law, and sort them out, and try to get everything in order, because that means you, you said so much to us, okay?
Thank you. Any other questions? I really appreciate it, Ron.
Yeah, we'll be seeing you guys in September, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Everybody take care, Cameron, let me know if there's any follow up questions, looking forward to seeing you all.
All right, we'll do it.
Take care.
Yeah. All right. All right. So now, we can now. Revaluation presentation, K R T appraisals, uh, we were hoping to receive ground rules on this, because I know it's we all have questions for sure, uh. But we were trying to keep it, uh, for, keep the questions more global, rather than, you know, about a specific property, because the rules apply to us all on this, uh. We were hoping that the select board could ask questions first, and hopefully cover many of the questions that folks have out there, uh. And obviously, you know, we wanna be respectful of folks for coming and actually presenting to us, they forget anything. I mean. Yes.
But that if if there are other questions after the select word, share the questions that have been given to us, certainly.
Oh, yeah.
People will have the opportunity to ask.
Yes. All right. What's that? So Ken, if you wanna start, I'll get the presentation out, so you can go to the screen.
Okay. Good evening, uh, again, my name's Ken Rogers, I'm the president of K R T. And, uh, with me tonight is Rob Tojer, who's the vice president of K R T.
It's being your slide now since I use.
Yeah, slide two.
Yeah.
All of this little that screen, I'm ready to get going.
They change it. I have this power, what's this called? They change it every ten minutes. No, I just. Ah, I just learned something myself. To deal with that idea. Well, I don't know.
Here, just gotta get used to it.
So, all right, is that what you see? Cause like my screen looks different then.
Can you get back to the first page?
Yeah.
How's that?
You'd start with the next one. So tonight, we thought we would talk about, uh, goals of a revaluation, you know, how do the new proposed values measure up to recent sales? And, uh, what the remaining tasks are on the project. So goals of a revaluation is, uh, to correct disproportionate taxation by valuing, you know, all property at fair market value. As of April first of twenty twenty four, uh, revaluation will adjust value for market shifts. It ensures that various classes of property are valued at the same level of market value. Uh, which equates to uniformity and fairness. In a mass appraisal system, uh, we use a computer assisted mass appraisal system, uh, which is based on tables. Which, uh, equates to a systematic approach. So the two, uh, statistics that assessors, uh, work with are the median ratio. Um, which is, um, a relationship between the sale price and, and the assessed value, so it's the assessment, uh, divided into the sale price, we give you the ratio. The other statistic is the coefficient of dispersion, which is the tightness of fit around that median ratio. So if you were at, say, ninety six percent of market value, you know, how tight are the other sales around that ninety six? So the lower the number, uh, the better the quality. So the I double A O, which is the International Association of Assessing Officers, um, states that uh, for median ratios, they have to be between ninety and a hundred and ten percent. Um, C O Ds or coefficient of dispersions, change a little bit, vacant lands, usually you're dealing with a smaller number, so they give you a little bit more leeway. Um, and condos are a little tighter, because usually you're, you know, dealing with a one value instead of a split value. one value instead of a split value. So for Buckfield, our overall median ratio is ninety-six percent, so you add ninety-six percent of market value. The old median ratio was forty-two percent. Um, you know, single families, which is the majority of Buckfield, that's why the overall and the single family are relatively the same. Mobile homes are a little higher. You know, out of one oh four, but there should be coming down from a one thirty-one. Your vacant lands out of ninety-nine, and your commercial and industrial out are one oh two. Um, a couple of those, the mobile homes and the commercial industrial, you only had a few sales in both categories. So your C O D now for um your new C O D is nine point nine three, which is, you know, well below the ten, where your old was um out of whack. Your single families, you know, your seven point one three, where they were twenty-four point eight. Um, mobiles are at fourteen point six two, your vacant lands definitely became a lot tighter. We're at eleven point seven five, you're at forty-nine point one two before. Um, your commercial industrial are eight point three eight, where the old is nineteen point eight three. So for vertical equity is, are we pricing um smaller or less valued homes, more than larger homes or more costly homes? Um, so the I double A O states that you have to have a P R D, a price related differential between ninety-eight and one oh three, and we're at a one oh two, so we're well within that range, so we're not uh disproportionately assessing, you know, s- uh less valued homes versus um higher valued homes. So the the unsold property test, we're looking at the percentage of increase on the sales versus the non-sale properties. So the the sale properties actually went up a hundred and nine point seven eight percent. And the unsold properties went up uh a hundred and five point eight six percent. Uh, which is uh one point four percent difference. At least on the ratio, not the percent increase. Which you have a three percent um leeway there, so well within that, so we treated the uh sales the same way we did the unsold properties. So the remaining task, uh we've had a lot of hearings, so we're still reviewing those hearing sheets. Uh, we'll make, you know, any necessary changes to the database. Um, every property owner that had a value change or came in from a hearing will receive a change notice. Uh, then we'll be looking at uploading assess pro in the town. And we also deliver a uh use pad manual to the town, which uh basically gives you all the instructions to go forward and keep your values in line. That concludes our presentation, uh you know, we'd like to take some questions.
Ken?
Yes, please.
Hello, I'm talking through a screen here, um. My name is Sandra Pickett, I'm a select board member. I have several questions that were given to me by community members. Maybe I'm the only one in the room, but uh much of the language that you just used was incredibly foreign to me, and I'm not even going to pretend that I understand most of what you just said, and it's going to take me a while to do some research to understand this. Perhaps most people listening are are feeling the same way. What perhaps the crux of the questions that are being brought to us as select board members is we all understand that this needed to be done. And I think people were surprised by the numbers that were mailed to them. Where many people are challenged is that there seems it it's not kind of a balanced increase for the town. There are some people whose property values um raised by a certain percent, and then there are other people's properties who doubled, tripled, quadrupled. And people are trying to understand why on those differences. Um, one of the first questions that was asked to me is how can the taxpayers access all of the information about their appraisal? And this comes from an individual who came to a meeting and saw new information in that meeting that they did not have access to prior to that meeting. So how how taxpayers access all the information about their property?
So the the database will actually be going back to the town, which all that information will be available, uh property record cards can be printed from the database, uh which basically has every piece of information that was used. We'll also, you know, we turn over the use pad manual, that's all the public record, um you can post that online. Um, and you know, that has uh all the methodology that was used in the valuation process.
Once so without getting into specifics, this individual came in and found out that their appraisal included things that did not exist on their property, and they had no idea that those things that you folks had that information, which as a taxpayer, now I'm curious, is there something on your piece of paper about my home and property that is inaccurate and I have no idea? Because there's information that you have that wasn't posted online. Does that make sense, why people are?
I I hear what you're saying, um. I'm not sure how we could get all that information out there, I mean, it's it's a database, so it's you know, property record cards are the only way to show that.
But would a prop-
Go ahead.
So the only way to know that you have accurate information is for every individual to come in to see that information?
But that's correct.
Taxpayers should all review their their property cards way to the left, so that so that's a simple procedure.
So when you say we review their property card, is that the piece that's online?
So once, once Ken and KRT, once we get the database, we're gonna have the same property cards that we have during the hearings.
Okay.
We can access that through the system. Right now, our current property cards are the old N D S ones that are sitting in full research in our file cabinets. Uh, the web pro version of what they can access on KRT's website right now. Uh, you can actually see the art items and stuff like that, that they didn't pick up, you can't see a value assessment for them, but they'll identify either shed or a lead to or a pool or or whatever it is, and it'll sign that it has a code assigned to it, and then you can see how to sort people this. So people can review what they currently have through that process.
Right now.
Correct. They just can't, they can't see the total value for each individual item. It's more of like a a light version of of what they have access to in the database.
But things like if your entire home is hardwood floors versus no hardwood floors, that's information.
That's a good question, Ken, I don't know how to answer that one.
The the all that information is on the property record card.
So the full card that we'll we'll have, we'll have here, we'll have that.
So once those full cards come out and people review them as is best practice, then if there's a an error, then it would be the responsibility of the taxpayer to follow through with an abatement request.
To notify the setting off, just that, hey, you know, I tore that shed down.
Okay.
You know, things like that, we need to be careful.
Okay.
So if there are errors, you need to let us know.
So people don't need to be worried that those errors need to be found in the next two weeks?
I mean, if there's an error like that, then yes, if if taxes are permitted, they can file a big, then then they're collecting, you know, costs.
Okay. Here's a question I've been asked several times, how is a view determined?
We did a uh a full field review there. So the app- appraiser that was in the field put the view on. So it's, you know, again, that'll be spelled out in the use pad manual on how it was applied. Um, you know, what's the difference between a good view, a very good view, and an excellent view?
So there so all homes fall into one of those three categories?
No, some have no view.
No view, so all homes would fall into one of four categories?
Yes.
Okay, and so how how do people know which category they're in?
Again, that's like, that'll be on the property record card.
Okay, so depending on which of those four categories you're in, that will impact the, and I'm sorry if I'm using the wrong terminology, that will impact the value of your buildable lot?
Yes.
Does it impact the value of the rest of your property?
No.
So it's just the buildable lot?
Yes.
Okay, and that impact would be like, if you have no view, there's no impact, if you have a good view, it's fifty percent increase, but what what are the values assigned to those levels of view?
Again, I I wouldn't know off the top of my head, but it'll be in the use pad manual.
Okay, but there is.
So the views are actually, um, the adjustments come from, you know, market sales from Buckfield that were extracted out. So it's not that we're slapping a condition factor on the base lot without any basis for it. Um, it's all, it's all market driven from sales in Buckfield.
I I understand that, but I I think the folks who have come with this question, um want to have some level of assurance that there is a concrete set of standards for view, because what it, people are feeling that it's wasn't necessarily equitable the way view was assigned, so if there is con- a concrete standard, then they can look and see, yep, my view falls under that, whether I agree or not, my view meets X, Y, and Z. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And so there will be whatever metric you use, will that concrete metric will be available to the taxpayers?
Yes, again, it's that'll be in the use pad manual.
Do you have, if people are questioning if the amount of the view bump, I don't know what the right word is, but the increase per view um is, which is, what are we looking at right now, a hundred percent? Like it doubled that, on some people, it's a hundred percent increase on their build a lot. Is that somewhere in line with the towns of Oxford, Hartford, Southern and Tur?
I know, Oxford, I can say yes, the other two, I have no idea, cause we didn't do them.
So in the town of Oxford, if you have a good view, your buildable lot is twice the value of
Again, it would depend on what the the sales, you know, what was extracted from the sales.
Okay. Um, so, and I think this may be my last one, you know, to, if somebody else has one. Be not still, okay, um, how many, am I correct that sixty-six sales were used for calculations or were? Is that correct?
Yeah, that was the amount of arms-length transactions in that two-year period.
In your experience, do you find, would you is is sixty-six for, and we have approximately what, fifteen hundred? Approximately fifteen hundred properties in the town of Buckfield. Is that truly a representative sample?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. Um, and then someone asked me, and I'm not sure I understand all of this, I did some research today on residual land method. And we have a community member um, or if they're watching, I blacked out their name, um, who was under the impression that the residual land method was used. And yeah, when this person researched residual land value and how it's calculated, and from what I read, it it doesn't appear that it was necessarily used, particularly on the properties, the under, what there were a whole bunch of properties that were sold and appraised, and they questioned whether or not the residual land method was actually used.
It i- it's used in combination with the vacant land sales. So it's a, it's both.
So if there's a piece of land that has been cleared and has road access is that is that considered comparable to a piece of land that has not been cleared and does not have road access?
Well, it would be different, uh with no road access, obviously it would have a lower value. Obviously, it would have a lower value.
Okay. I think that covers the questions I've been.
I think, I think on that, on that one instance there is they're questioning. Someone had a large tract of land, spent a considerable amount of time and money to, um. Put a road or driveway or several driveways, several roads into this property, kind of making like a subdivision or something like that. And. If this sells for a large amount of money. It's sold because somebody put a lot of time and money into that property. Was that money and time taken out of like the sale price? Because that, that piece of property is worth more than a piece of property of the same size that hasn't been worth, it's just got growth from each.
And there's only one house that can go on that property?
I don't know. It just seems like there's a couple of outliers out there that, um. Kind of skewed the numbers. Based on sale price. You know, there's no house on it, there's, there's nothing. And when. Fifty acres goes for close to five hundred thousand dollars. Why is that? Oh.
Well, you know, now we're kind of talking about a specific property.
Just there are several other properties like that in the town. And.
I may interrupt your question. And the, for us, sir, it's not a matter of questioning the, the job that you did or, um. You know. There are townspeople who are looking at. A sizable increase in their taxes.
Mm-hmm.
And. Compared to other people who. Not so much, um. And, and I, I understand that. And so we're trying to understand how it came about. That some people who did not. Um. Did not make improvements to their homes or additions. Um, help them to understand and be okay with, um. A huge increase. In their tax bill, particularly some of our older residents who are. On fixed income and, um, are, are really distressed with. This huge jump that they're about to. Face. Compared to their neighbors.
The only thing that we can look at is what the market value of the property is now. We, you know, we can't go back and look at what. You know, what it was assessed for before, uh, you know, we honestly don't even know when those values were established. We're gonna say it's over twenty years old. Uh, maybe Cameron has an idea of when those base values were. Um, established.
It's been over thirty, yeah, over thirty years.
There, there you go. I mean, we saw values in there for, you know. A hundred dollars or a couple hundred dollars and, you know, those lots are selling for thirty and forty thousand, um. You know, that's why there's a lot of, it's not an even amount across the board. You know, it'd be easy if we just could come in and say, all right, you know, you're going up eighty percent, everybody goes up eighty percent, we leave. Yeah, I can do that in a day, but that's, that's not how this works. You know, we have to look at what the market value of the property is. It's ad valorem taxation, it's by value. Um. It's hard, and I know, you know. We run into this all the time where there's, um. You know, some big increases. We feel they're warranted. We looked at what we did with the sale properties and. You know, the non-sale properties basically mimic what we did. Um. You know, if, uh, you know, through the abatement process, if they feel the property is overvalued, they can come in with, you know. Their proof that it's overvalued. You know.
Were all sales? Included or were like outlier sales, high and low? Uh, discarded?
They're all used. It's just a matter of, you know, how much weight. You know, they all have some weight. If it's an arms-length transaction, we have to use them. You know, we don't have a choice.
Anybody else on the select board have questions for me?
Now you hit my question.
Okay. Um. If it's all right, before we. Move on for other people to ask questions. After. I feel confident that I'm speaking for the board. When I say that. We support every taxpayer. In moving forward to make sure. That this is correct. And that. Even after this process of meetings is done. If people still feel that there are inaccuracies or errors. That we have. We're in this as a team, it's not select board versus community. We want this to be accurate. We want this to be. Fair as our boards use right now, but. And, yeah, so this is something that had to be done and it's been done, there are. There are a lot of pieces to go through this, but. Then we're in this together and we will support people through this process, through the abatement process. When errors are found, we will support people in that. Trying to discourage anybody from going through the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Any questions?
Uh. I may have misunderstood or misheard you, but. The, when you guys deliver the. USPAP, I don't know if that's how we pronounce it, the USPAP manual of the town. Uh. I believe you said something about. You, there will then be. A pro- process where we work with the town. To make adjustments or, I got, I made basically like, what, what does it look like when we receive that manual? And, but what, what is that going to do? Because it seemed like that's a, a humongous part of this whole thing, like not a whole lot can. Be determined until we have that. So once the town has that. What's, what are we doing with that? And what, what's that look like?
Well, it's the, the methodology that was used for the revaluation and USPAP stands for Uniform. Um. Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice, um. But it shows the methodology, shows the sales that we use, shows any analysis, uh, shows how the land is set up. Um, any views, um. Are in there. It's, it has all the tables that are in the canvas system, uh. So it's. The assessing. Uh, department can look at that and see what we did. Or the public can see and. Um, usually that answers probably ninety percent of the questions that arise from a revo.
Okay, thank you. And, and they then can take that match against their property card.
Yes.
Right? Yesterday.
Well, I, I was curious, were there many properties that have never been appraised?
Judy asked if there were any companies that have never been appraised?
Um, they've probably all been appraised. I don't think we've found any that weren't. Um. There, I'm sure there's, you know, outbuildings and stuff like that, that. You know, we picked up that weren't there before.
My pleasure, the total appraisal we could, uh.
Judy asked what the total appraisal was for the town.
I s- still don't have that info. We're still going through hearings and making changes, uh, once that's done, you know, we can release that.
Does it appear to be in line with the state's? Value of our town?
I don't know. I wouldn't know what the state's value is. I would say it, it shouldn't be too far off, uh, just because they're using ratios too, but probably a couple of years older.
Yes, Judy.
We have one more question. Cameron, you like that idea? That is so helpful appraisal, how much more will get? Dollars from state?
I don't have that information currently.
We don't, we didn't go that far.
Well. Taxpayers will get their full valuation from their home's inception as opposed to the thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars they were going to get if we certified it fifty percent.
Right, I'm about, you know, what if state gets that same?
So if you. If you look at what. The way the state law is written. And where the towns need to be at. You know, that's seventy to a hundred percent. The primary driver that I can guess, this is my personal opinion, is the, the, the state doesn't want to have to reimburse a town with a super high mill rate. Even at a partial, because that partial oftentimes would be more money than what it is at full valuation, the town's possessed property. So we could be looking at less of a return and closing reimbursements, but I, I don't have that information in front of me. Any other questions out there? Fine. All wheel.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so the first question I have, um, is do we still have time to submit? Um, a reassessment or, or to talk to one of your agents, uh, to go over what they looked at on our properties?
Um, I'm not sure where we are with the hearing process.
Because I know that I've submitted a couple of different things, a couple of different ways, but I never got confirmation that you guys received it or that you were. Still taking. Requests to come back out to the property and talk. And the reason why I say that is because when I look at the cards online. It says that both of my properties were built in twenty eighteen and that's so far off the, the mark. Uh, they weren't even close to be, being built in twenty eighteen. So I'm just wondering if there's other things that we can talk about, because when the person showed up here. I was not here, but my wife was and. The guy didn't even want to come in the house. Um, so I don't know how, you know, what, what, you know, what he appraised it as, as far as what the inside looking. And he even told my wife that there was no option for unfinished. You know, so if, yeah, so I don't, I, you know, so it's basically, I'm just asking, is there another way, whether it was myself or someone else to. Make sure that we can talk with someone in your. Um, group or business to come back out and take a look.
If you, uh, want to give my office a call tomorrow, we can.
Okay.
It's, uh, eight, seven, seven.
Yep.
Three, three, seven. Five, five, seven, four.
And anybody special to talk to?
Um, you can probably talk to Candy.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions out there? Yes, Judy?
More, but. If our, if our, well. Total amount goes up, does that affect our split scheme? We get, we have to pay. With this, if we take on, on our social strategy.
Uh, yes.
Our articles, I'll say, more than most.
School uses the state's valuation, right? They don't use the valuation. So there are, this, the schools are using the state valuation. They're not using.
And they are.
Our whole valuation, perfect. The breakdown, I believe, is twenty-five percent, people about seventy-five percent state valuation. So then this, this. Won't have any negative long-term effects on.
Good question.
Hmm. Any other?
That question is not for, I'm trying to care, it's.
Yes, Margaret.
Um. It's been a long time coming. It's a shot, we're speaking about. Thirty years is way too long, so to evaluations, so, so, hey, our question. How are we as Buckfield not going to let Sam get? Are we going to put ourselves on a reevaluation schedule, reevaluation schedule? Still. Seven, twenty, thirty years from now, we're going to say it over.
Yes, Sandra?
I've given this a lot of thought. I would propose. That once this process is finished. It will be an agenda item on, for a select board meeting and looking for the town. The community for their input on what schedule the community. Would like for that to be, I have my own personal opinions, but that's not what this is about. It's about having a. A discussion for the entire community. Okay, and once this is completed. It's a very good order, this is. Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else. Oh, yes, Judy?
Sam, I think you have. Sam, we found. Muscles, tires of.
The assessing assistant?
And, and he will be doing what?
Hey. Once he's certified, he will, he will become our assessor, but he's currently an assessing assistant, so he's handling the inventory. At, the directory of people and, and. And doing that right now. He went to Brockford School last, probably three years ago. He still has, he got the test results, but.
But we are very glad that he is here.
And, and you haven't met him, he's a super nice guy, yeah.
One, so that KRC president, um, the view tax, just to be clear, is there any amount of? Subjective evaluation? In that? The view tax?
Well, it's not a view tax as, you know. As it would be a house tax or land tax, it's, you know, it's an attribute that adds to the valuation. Is there some subjectivity to it? Sure there is. There has to be, just like the quality or the condition of your house. There's always a little bit of subjectivity, um. That's why, you know, we're appraisers and. You know, it's, those are the things we look at. And, you know, will it be much subjectivity? No, normally within reason.
Yes, Sandra?
So to, to follow up on that, if a community member, if a taxpayer. Felt that. The category that their view was placed in. Was, that that decision was made in error. What? Information or, or what could they do? Um. To, what data? Could they use to have that discussion or look for an abatement?
It's look for, uh, com- comparable properties, you know, whether they're sales or, you know, just other assessments that. Um, share the same attributes that they do.
Yes, sir. I just want to clarify, I, I think Sandra, you discussed this earlier, but. So the only thing being taxed, and I know you're saying a view isn't. Taxed or paying taxes on you, so we're. If, so you're saying the only thing. That the view tax or whatever terminology we're using. Is the one acre. Buildable, like it doesn't affect the house or the remaining part of the land. You're saying the only thing that's increased. Is the build. is the buildable lot?
Yes.
Do, do we know? Like what, what the range was for increase? Like some people it went up fifty dollars, some people it went up fifty thousand. Okay, what's, what's kind of the?
I don't know a dollar amount, but um, it was, I believe, over, yeah, it was a hundred and ten percent was the average.
So. My property, that one acre, although not one acre, my whole property is, I'm, I'm just. So the average of those three view categories was a hundred and ten percent. So there are people that it could have gone up far more than.
Yeah, the hun- the hundred and ten percent is the average for the town. I don't know what the averages are for, for views.
So a hundred and ten is the average for everything for the town?
Yes.
Is some people's in double. Is that reasonable?
Yes, that would be, yeah, doubling is a, is a hundred percent.
Okay.
Yes, Judy?
Like kind of the past, if we add from tax, taxable, at the usual length, four hundred acres. Is there a, a formula that's used for the average of piece of land now?
So what Judy was saying is that, uh, that the average per acre uh, was about four hundred dollars and she was curious what it is now for the town of Buckfield.
Yeah. I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Does two thousand dollars sound accurate? That seems to be what I found in the math that I've done.
I, I believe it is.
Yes, Sandra?
So that two thousand dollars an acre is that, would that be impacted if, let's say, you have a hundred acres, but fifty acres of it is small or fifty acres of it is for whatever reason, you can't build on it, you can't use it, it's, you know, shale or would that matter?
Yes, it does matter.
So that, that could be something that people wanna make sure that you folks know.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Martha?
Again, it's shocking for all the taxes I hear you, because white property is not in any, it's not in rural, it's not in, it's just part of the major taxes, figure it. And for years, when I was an assessor, that was a question that I kept bringing up, is that we had it only at four hundred dollars an acre. And it kept rising and rising outside of the town, so that we're now two thousand dollars an acre. So the only ways that people can not pay those taxes is it has to be a special type of plot of land. Rural agriculture, like you were saying, it's the side of a mountain and there's nothing there, there's farmland and, but you have to put it into that. And then you pay penalties to pay it out. If not, you have to pay the tax of what it's assessed for right now. Because we waited thirty years, it's two thousand dollars an acre.
Any other questions? Alright, well, thank you, Ken.
Alright, thank you.
I appreciate you coming out and chatting with us. I'm sure we'll see you soon. Have a good night, guys.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody. But for that, the other whole business agenda item, which is Cam and Benny have two years. Sandra was kind enough to give her some.
Just wanna make sure you made it through the meeting.
Yeah, my wife messaged. And I asked her to hot sauce in the office too, I saw. I guess.
You just recased something in your trunk. You tried to find. In all seriousness, thank you very much for your hard work and dedication to these town. We appreciate you.
My pleasure.
Not all ours, oh, we can have our issues.
I appreciate it. I wanna transition on the light now. Well, the rest of the meeting's pretty, yeah, generic, there you go. Um, new business, the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Yes, Ken, just for the sake of the record, it's payroll warrant fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, my council bill warrant sixteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and the amount of eighty-five thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and forty-eight cents. Thank you. Yeah. All those in favor, Bob, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Approval of the minutes from the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four select meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Can I put them together?
Yeah, why not?
And the August sixth, twenty twenty-four select board meeting.
I'll second that motion. Alright, any expression? I didn't see anything in there.
It's a new format. I like it.
Yeah.
Was always easy to perforate.
Oh, saves a lot of time off of minute. You bring them to.
Alright, all in favor, all in favor, Bob, I.
Um, Sage, I'm here.
Oh, Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you. Alright, that's Darnett Road, Perkas River Culvert bids. I'm just gonna open and we'll vote on the next beat. Yeah, let's see that Perkas, Darnett.
These are two culverts that were damaged in the separate storm, so this is.
Alright, so you guys. I got darn it, right?
How many bits were there altogether?
There was three for each project. Were they from the same?
Yeah, so each company submitted two bids, one for each project, or each RFP. Companies. Ginger and Gendron, do you need the excavating? Pratt and Sons. I can find the total.
Just for the you to know. Click down, does that matter to you? Right, Vincent's is mechanic falls. Ginger Corp is Lewisson, DND excavating is Buxton. Which I would if we could, we say. Right?
Well, there's proposals here, so.
What were you regretting?
In the RFP, there's either a forty-eight inch or sixty inch.
Yeah.
Correct, when I spoke with FEMA, there was, we were, we asked for two quotes, which would be to replace life for life or do mitigation in the aspect of uh, upsizing the culvert diameter from sixty-eight inch to sixty inch. Full disclosure, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that Perkas could be upsized without having to build up the road that would create quite a hump, but I still asked for it.
Okay, I mean.
Perkas.
Yes, I have Perkas. So Pratt and Sons, their bid is a lump sum price at twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five for either the forty-eight inch or sixty inch pipe. DND excavating, um, theirs is twenty-seven thousand six hundred, six hundred and twenty. Um, and I don't see a specification of size, so I think it's for, yeah, it's for either. As well. Um, Jenyu and Gendron, for the forty-eight inch, it's thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty. For the sixty inch, it's fifty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight.
Okay, so for the Darnett Road proposal, DND excavating is a lump sum of twenty-five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Or Pratt and Sons, the forty-eight inch culvert is twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars. The sixty inch is twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. This, then Jenyu and Gendron, the forty-eight inch is thirty-seven thousand six hundred forty-five dollars. And the sixty inch is forty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. And this year now. So I'm stealing. Let you get all of them over.
At some point, I will offer some to everybody who really need.
Two of these included liability insurance. And does that matter that they did it?
They have it, I have it on file. Yes, Sandra?
I, I just wanted to throw out there for anybody supporting us now or watching this later, um, I, we are not dealt to the, um, public or the concerns of some community members that the select board may or may not make decisions that of what the town wants. And what I would say is we need to make a decision which company to go with for these culverts for this repair. This information is open to any and every citizen in Buckfield. Please come review it. Please give us your feedback. How would you like to see it repaired? Who do you want to do this? Because our decision will be based on the information that we get from the community. And um, the more feedback we can get from community members as far as how, how they would like to see things done. That's, that would be super helpful.
Yeah.
Please. Give us your feedback. But I'm correct, we were just opening these today to then give people the opportunity.
Yeah, put it out there, keep straight out of what it's gonna cost, the companies involved, so.
And then this will go on the agenda.
Yeah.
For the next meeting.
Yeah, the third Tuesday, whatever date that is. First Tuesday, now, now it's the first Tuesday, the first Tuesday, so the September third, please do.
In your absence, Cameron, I was encouraging people to um, look at these, think about these people in the community and um, for them to share their feedback and to.
I thought most are better.
And we'll talk about this at the next select board meeting, right?
Yes. I'll get everything stand up tomorrow.
Alright. Restoration of the cistern in front of the lighter.
So this was brought to me by, um, or maybe I should start this way. I'd like to make a motion that we ask on the town manager to have a researcher delegate to somebody to research what it would cost to um, restore the cistern in front of the water.
Now second that.
Um, so for discussion, people, I've had members of the community um, and asked me what it would take to um, restore that cistern. For people who aren't familiar, there's a cistern in front of the library. The library has done, the flowers are beautiful, the library and the library committee has done a fantastic job um, on the whole property. But um, when we look, you can see it on the picture on this wall, that cistern used to be the very center of the town. And that's where your horses can stop for a drink of water. Um, and there, some people have expressed that they, it is currently painted um, with a mural of playful aliens. And there is, some people have expressed that they would like to see it restored to looking as close to what it would originally look like as possible. So I told them that I would bring that up here at the meeting and perhaps we could find out what it can cost to essentially be like sandblasting and repainting or restoring the material underneath. Um, and then perhaps once we have that information, people can come to town and let us know. Stick with the aliens or do something different?
Something traditional.
And more traditional, but. I, I didn't know what that was until somebody explained it to me. It was just what a fantastic piece of history we have here. So that's what that was about.
Alright, any further discussion? So the motion was made for, to ask him get some pricing on restoring that, or someone or something, not necessarily Cameron. Yeah, oh yeah, certainly.
You can tell who.
Delegate, delegate, absolutely. Oh, I see. Alright, all in favor, Bob, I. All those.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Communication of town information.
So we now have in place a a mailing list for the town of Buckfield. Um, you can get this um, online. It's also posted in several places in the town, so you can go up with your smartphone and scan that. I think I'll take you right there. Um, I tried it. It's very easy. Just put in your email address and then whenever there's information, for instance, road closure, you will get an email. Um, communication paramount to things moving along successfully and smoothly. Um, and I guess the question would be, are there other modes of communication that would be helpful? And I guess the question would be, are there other modes of communication that would be helpful? People express that they don't know what's going on um. So how how do you want to get your news? I would say that this would be. A a great piece and if for whatever reason you do not use technology at all, I have cleared it with um. The town manager that people can feel free to call the town office and say, did you send out an email? And if the answer is yes, they'll read it to you.
True.
I I would check his spam folders. I know I had one instance where an email was bounced back because it was blocked. I think it's because we use constant contact, so some of your email filters might think it's spam. I can't remember what the email addresses that it comes that it looks like it comes from, so I'll probably have to post that so people can add it to their contacts so that it actually comes through. But uh I've also. There's a SMS portion to this too. I'm still waiting for the registration to be approved because that's to be approved of the cell companies, but. That'll be another option as well.
That would be texting for people like me.
If you got one emails, that means you're all set, like on the road closure or something like that, that came through, that mean you're good.
Yeah, so I I mean. On the email side of things, if somebody didn't want to add their phone number to the other side of it, once it's available, you'll want to sign up for that one too, because it's too separate. But yes, if if um they're registered, I did send that one the other day. Your email just happened to be the only one that got bounced back for whatever reason. Um, because when I emailed you for my email, it went through, it was spotted, so I thought it was coming through as my email address, which just made it easier because. But I recognize it. I think legal regulations, it has to come from some variation of constant contact, so. But. It's nice because I can see how many people opened it and I know that when I sent that road closure out. Given me it only had like forty something people signed up for it, so a few days, but the majority, I think I had a seventy five percent open rates. That was pretty good. It was a lot more.
Wow, so it gives you feedback.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, and just will the dates of like meetings like this be sent out on that as well?
That's what that's what I want to uh get to is so I can send out. In advance to people and remind them that the meeting's up and then include the agenda, so if people find something that they want. If in attendance, they'll be informed about that, so. I dropped the ball this week.
I'm pretty handed some of it to me and then I promptly dropped it, so. It's not all on you, Cameron.
Team effort.
Team failure.
All right, that's great.
Uh, I mean, it's been people have been signing up, so. We, I think a while ago, they had an old school email list that kind of fell apart, so this is a lot. More advanced than what they have in the past and it's nice to see the feedback and see that people are getting the messages as opposed to just hitting the inbox and it's not going anywhere.
Right, to do the same for text. I will know once the registration.
Yeah, that's a.
Period, Sarah. That's nice.
But if there are people who need information to be shared with them in a different way. Please reach out.
Right.
They.
Yeah.
Want people to be informed.
We appreciate the input on these things. Usually it's just us sitting in here. Speaking of that. The future of the planning board.
So. We have. Except for. So um. It's an ordinance.
Yeah.
That we have. The Buckfield is to have a planning board. We do not have a planning board because we do not have people. Who are willing and able to be on the planning board. We have to have a planning board because of our ordinance. If we are not going to have a planning board, we cannot. Get members. Of a planning board, then we'd need to hold a special town meeting. To. End. That ordinance and then as a town, we would have to decide. What governing body would be responsible. For the responsibilities of a planning board. Um, we talked about this on Cameron Rishow to. Legal. Um. So we're we're at the point of. Please, we need to find three, at least three people who are willing to be on the planning board um. Means once a month. Responsible for reviewing um applications for subdivision.
Uh, I mean marijuana. Decisions or doesn't happen. They're. School, they're supposed to review the comprehensive, yeah. Hasn't been updated in a while. But primarily right now, if somebody were to come in and wanted to subvert something. They have to go to the planning board and there are no planning board to. Do that, so I mean. Right now, we're kind of in a bind where if if somebody didn't want to seriously develop their property and couldn't get through that process. Legally, they could come after the town. Force our hand to find a planning board, so.
So we're in the situation right now, we either need to. Have a planning board or call a special town meeting. To no longer have a planning board.
They did caution against that also because it can become uh impermissible. Especially where we have ordinances specifically allocate certain things to the planning board, so your your other ordinances would be.
So I put out there to the town, this town said we will have a planning board, we need a planning board. Um, we currently have one member. On planning board. I believe.
And we cannot do it.
The select board members cannot serve on the planning board um.
Can any of the boards cross, like can people from like the budget committee sit on planning? So there can be, it's just select. It's in the ordinance that municipal officers can't say it all, okay, but other boards can. That are multiple. We actually have a lot of. Committee members that are on multiple committees, okay?
Yes. Um.
There's openings for other.
There are openings for many boards and some of the most important thing right now, um, so the planning board. There's openings for five. Well, it can be a five member board. I believe there is one person.
There's one right now, so it's it's four more members and then an alternate.
Um. For the ordinance.
I can't.
Committee, there are zero members. Um, appeals, there is one member of five and. Um. Then we also, we have openings. I think on everything in circle of the community events committee.
Everybody in the budget committee inspired. So there is nobody on the budget committee.
And this is, I have like no knowledge to this stuff, so I'm just kind of fire questioning as I think about, but um. So the one, you you said one of the committees, there's only one person on it. So in that case, if there's a situation, like if there's a. Irrelevant. Event of that type, they're just making that decision.
They can't because you can't have a four number one, so we we would have to have at least three people.
Okay. So those, any committee with less than three people is basically irrelevant?
Yeah, you can't really do much.
I I would, I would say this just so that people can only understand the importance. Committees and committees, we can live without them. The planning board, we cannot. That's the one that we really should be pushing to get people on. Because that's the more and more of a budget committee, any of the other committees, this board that sits in front of you now can make any of those decisions without committees giving any input. Legals, they committees are, they want some help, they want some assistance, they want the committee to do the research because y'all are the jobs. And so it just takes a little bit off the table, but the planning board, they can't cross over. So decisions that have to be made by the planning board. Uh, cannot be made by the 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 one that sits in front of you, so they're usually separate.
Piggyback on what you just said, too, the appeals board is the same aspect, I don't think we've had an appeal board.
Yeah, same thing.
For a long time and at some point in the future, there will be a need for them. To have a meeting and we don't have one.
We can't appeal any anymore unless it's gone through the process.
So how would one get involved in this? Like how would how would somebody?
There's, they work here in the town office, you can get it online. Um.
They also do, uh, there's there's plenty of more training that they do through and made at the town. Paying for for people that, you know, want to get involved so that they can kind of learn the role of what the planning board does.
There's a whole manual, so you're not sitting there.
We provide you with a manual, which is about that thing.
I went to one of the trains, it was so fascinating and the food was really good. But it was, I was curious, what is this all about? Was it? It was fascinating, they were great people. Um, you can network with other planning boards. Um. Yes, we as the board in the town will support anybody helping them get the information that they need to do that job with.
We can't. You can't expect anybody to just jump in and be like, hey, I know what to do on the planning board. There's, I mean, there's, we give you the resources that you need so that we can.
It's about people who come to the planning board with information with requests, they want to build what they want to do, and then the planning board. Reviews all the materials and just make sure that it. Fits into the ordinance that has been set, well, Buckfield, so.
Right, where we're looking at taxes at the moment, uh, you know, with the evaluations, you know, having an ability to. Build a new home, spread out the tax base a little bit, bring a business into town is very important. So.
I do currently, I did have somebody bring in an application. For um. Some medical marijuana business, but I didn't take a, I didn't take an application fee because. Not until we can put them before the planning board. But there is something that's that's there that needs to be reviewed, but I we currently can't do anything with it. At the moment.
So anybody who's interested in being on the planning board, you can get the application online or here in the town office and feel free to. Find out any select board member or the town office if you have any questions and we'll get that information to you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other business, does anyone have any other business? No.
Is there anybody out there on Zoom land that has any questions, questions, comments, things that you want to talk about in the future?
I'll I'll open it up for public, I was just. Yeah, I don't see anything yet.
Oh, yes, sir. Um, back to the. Tax uh. Uh, the evaluation. Did we, did this go out to bid? The this. And I know that we could have been, we should have been more involved in this, but I guess. It's, I wasn't, and now I have questions.
Well, yeah, I mean, we. I understand entirely, yeah.
So we did put this out as a town to multiple. Appraisal. Assessing. Companies.
When? I don't even remember when that date was.
It's it's been a while. Bob and I were both on the board one of the, yeah, two years ago. I don't recall how many firms responded. I'd have to go back in my select board email, but there was an RFP that did go out, it was pretty lengthy too. Uh, and anybody that I can get you a copy of it, you go out there.
See, you remember like where their firms from. Name?
Call anybody. I I don't think there was, I think he cared, he was the only one that responded, but don't hold me on that.
Yeah.
Um. So this is all. Uh, it looks like it was due June twentieth of twenty twenty two. Wait. Yeah, so the bids are due June twentieth of twenty twenty two. So we would have put them out well before that. I'm trying to figure out. I'm trying to find who was the town manager at the time.
Um.
Who?
Lauren.
It was Lauren.
I think so. So don't think you care.
Twenty twenty two. The it's due June twentieth of twenty twenty two. Yeah, there was a, there was a guy, it was like a killing town manager. Longest time. Yeah, then I started, yeah, it was long because I started. So this is right at the end of. It's right where I started.
Yeah. So what would have happened if like these culvert projects, if one per, if if you, I assume you put this out to these companies, is that how it works? Like you say, we're looking for. Real work to be done. If only. Pratt and Sons. Replied with a. Proposal. You, would you just pick Pratt and Sons?
We we likely would unless we thought the the fee was outrageous, we could put it out again, but. You know, if it if it looked reasonable and. Then, you know, the timeframe was bad, we did our due diligence, yeah, we may have just moved forward with it.
So I assume the cop, like as a town, did we pay for this re, this assessment?
Yeah.
So I assume we looked at what it would cost to have O'Donnell or. Any of these other local companies do the same work?
They would have had to do, uh, put in the bid, you know, so we had some idea and I don't recall what the bids were at the time. I think the discussion that was had at those meetings was the going rate was was. Around one hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is what hap, this happened to be, and I don't recall. I had to do some research to find out if there were more that had submitted at the time. I'm drawing a blank right now.
Yes, Sandra?
And the town. Votes. To spend the money on it.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Yes, anytime a decision. About it is well. It's made by the select board with whatever input, so certainly any community members that. That's why I said with this bid process, we're not locked, we don't have to go in any of these, we could. Look further if that's what people felt would be the best.
There you go. Follow the minutes.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, I think our team is the only one who's responding. Uh.
I'm sorry, I'm leaving in a second.
And no one in the community. But you can, I'm, I'm, we were, we're Jeremy and Eric, by the way, we're newer at Buckfield and our proposed. Increase in property taxes is only four point eight times uh. Currently. So. Like no one in the community questioned. This this company being from payroll with mass.
I don't think so. I mean, it it's a bill rate was, you know, a hundred and fifty, they put it out a hundred and forty five, it's, it should be an even process, you know, I mean, they have a. A scripted process where, you know, the, they just do the math on it and look at the properties in the area regardless of where it is, so theoretically. You know, you could have a appraisal company from California come here and get a similar result, you know, because they're just, they're just a bunch of numbers. Uh, but I hear what you're saying, right?
Well, there's like, he said, you know, uh. A portion of their job is subjective in opinion based, so. If you own your property. Cable mass. But I mean, I feel like we're kicking a tire at this point because it's, it's been done, but. Uh.
I got a work on from, there's, I guess, a few, right? I mean, everybody's idea of a few might be a little bit different, you know, and what. Yeah, I get it. And I think they were comparing it to similar properties that sold. In the area, so it wasn't, so it wasn't based on payroll mass, it was, it was just a property that was similar to whatever your property was. Like views, so, but yes. I'm not a big fan of the subjective portion, but hopefully it isn't too big of a portion.
Uh, back to. All right, I decided to talk to Cameron about this, I really just wanted to make a couple of points, I guess.
Uh, back to, alright, I, I tried to talk to Cameron about this, I really just wanted to make a couple of points, I guess, just for you guys to have, uh. I, for one, feel it right now, I don't think the values are that far off, honestly, uh, I've talked to. Fifty people on my road building and I think right now, I mean, I know two thousand sold my road and. One of them, I always thought was very hustling kids and it sold for about three times about value in one day. So, right now, they're probably not crazy, um. It's the mill rate and it's what's gonna happen in twelve months or eighteen months and it's, we're in this, we've got to get through it with town, uh. I have a handful of pieces of property throughout the state, I don't, I'm never going to be. That the town's appraisal was anywhere secure, what it was really, in any period. I don't think I can follow this, if I was in a kind of a, twenty years I lived there, my house probably worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the town crazed at one forty. You know, that was, I, everything I've ever owned has always been like that. So now we're talking about appraisal, it's like, hopefully on a good day, everything fell into place, the sun was shining, just rather. Might be able to get that today, you know, um. I, I told Cameron, my business is a pretty substantial piece of property with. It's a current piece of property, uh, multiple buildings, uh, road front, recital, it's, it's, it's a pretty substantial piece of property. If the miller is cut in half, the town, and, and I, I told Cameron this, I don't want my child car road tired, I don't want a police department, I don't want any. I'm like exactly that, uh, but hundreds of year old farmhouse, it's gorgeous, I'm not saying, it's not, I'm not saying, I'm not whining about any of that. But if the miller gets cut in half, my taxes would be three thousand dollars more on my house than on my business and power. It has everything, so it's. More than one, just want to make some, a couple of points, I guess, it's, it's, it's crazy, it's. And we were involved in town, here we are. See, that's like, uh, I'm trying, you know, I, I don't want to, I heard Cameron's able, town guys, so I start mine to pay the other day. But it's.
Yes, Andrew?
Well, this helps at all, um. So going, going through this whole process. We saw an inordinate jump, just as taxpayers and I'm concerned, on, on personal level. I get it, um, and. We're very invested in this community, um, our home, our business is here. Um, which is one of the biggest reasons that we're involved because, um. What's good for them, anyway, um. The tax burden, that's honest, it'll be. Our municipal taxes. Um, the amount that we need to raise through taxation for municipal did not go up. Um, the. School tax lease are going up, the, um, county taxes are going up. And those aren't anything that this board, um, had any control over, um. So as far as overall the taxes going up. It's important to me that this increase in taxes across all the properties be. As fair, equitable as it can be, there would be some people who see more of a jump than others. Because they may own a lot of land and the value of land has really increased. So we own some land and the value of that chance has really increased so that. Take my members of, beyond that, there's, there's some pieces that don't feel comfortable to me yet. Um, so we're gonna keep looking at that, I would encourage other people to. Keep looking at that. We support you, this board supports you in making sure that, um. Everything's accurate, because those words subjected, I'm not comfortable.
Yeah.
Was to people's silence is, um, but this decision was made a couple of years ago, it was before this board. Was healing, um, we can't go back, we can't, you know, right, but how? Have we moved forward and, and, and talking with Cameron. Earlier today, I better understand that if, if we don't get through this process in a timely fashion. So to be able to commit, then the homestead exemption, it's not going to be available to people in its entirety. Um, and I don't think that would be good for anybody. Certainly, to be able to know that that's if it was forward. People's valuation, if there are errors. That we can address that through the abatement process and. We support people in doing that. If you have any ideas.
Well, I think it's, it's alright. I don't think that, uh, me telling my, this floor is in a conference, this floor is gonna change, that house starts being fifty thousand dollars. You know, my bulk land was valued at twenty seven hundred dollars after taking out the house lot, I mean. I don't know, if, I'm sure I could get that for it right now, that, that's the thing that's frightening, I think, to people is. You might even have a little house, like, one eighty to seven ninety, it's probably worth that right now. But he, I mean, even if you can afford to pay the property taxes, I mean, to spend fifteen thousand dollars. And again, I mean, no offense, because I want to, I chose to live in Buckfield for eight years for my house. But I don't want to spend that kind of money with my house and, you know, it, it's not reality. And it's, you know, guy pays for living.
And I'm still learning about mill rate and how it's all figured out, but it, it basically comes down to what, what is the tax burden and how that gets distributed. Amongst, so I, that's boiling it down to a really.
Simple by, uh. The simplest scale, which. When you, when you go through this whole revaluation process and, and you go through and you go parcel by parcel. And you identify all the pieces to the puzzle that are there in the entire town. If you take anything, it's, it's equitably distributing the tax burden on all the taxpayers based off of what they have, so. And I can't remember if you and I discussed this when you were in the office, today's values are today's values and. Now that we've got a, a, a good piece of the, I mean, minus some arguments that we brought up and discussed in this meeting, uh. The, the equitable share of the overall tax burden, even if the house, every, every property, the market tanked and we all went down twenty, fifty percent. The mill rate would go up, if, if the budget remains the same, the same amount of tax dollars could be generated. So it's, there's, there's two ways to increase tax revenue. And that's either through, or non-tax revenue, to, um, take care of that mill rate and that actual tax burden. And that's either cut the budget, cut services or development. And we just, we don't allow a lot of, or it's not that we don't allow a lot of development, you know, Buckfield's a rural community, I like it that way, it's how I grew up here, I mean, it's probably why you move here. Um, but unfortunately, like, in a, in a city like Auburn, you know, they've got commercial businesses, they've got, they've got developments, they've got. Big properties, big dollars coming in, so it's, it's dispersed amongst more people. And the reality of Buckfield is, because we are rural and we have such big property owners, so to speak. Is, we're, we're restricting that, that growth factor, because that's what we want. And in essence, all of us now have to pay more for what we have, or we have to evaluate. What do we want to do without?
Yeah, and I think that in basic math, it all seems to make sense, but, you know, the thought of the mill rate going six percent. I don't know how realistic that is, but I know a lot of people who it has to go to that to keep their taxes within any realm of reality. And that's the part that I think is stressing a lot of people out.
It's one of these that I hope makes a difference is there were several, many, I'm not sure which is the word to use. Um. Buildings, structures, things that were on a piece of property that perhaps were not. Accounted for previously and now will be added to, I wanted to get that straight, I didn't write it down. Um.
Rural town assessment.
Would hopefully will help.
Yeah.
People that, situations where individuals were not paying taxes on. Things that now they will be and I'm not saying that any of that was done intentionally or. Whatever, but there were things that didn't. Get put on the books over the past few years, just because people need to get out there and collect that information. So hopefully that will add to the pool of, that will help.
And I know it's not you guys' fault, I know you guys walked into all this, so.
I think what it really comes down to is, especially where we haven't had a rebuild. We can't really pinpoint, over thirty years, can't pinpoint the last time, you know, there's been adjustments, slight adjustments to buildings, no adjustments to land. But what that's created over that three decades is. And I hate to, the term over and over again, but inequitable distribution of tax. So we've got people who are on fixed incomes that own an acre of land and, you know, really what they're paying in taxes has been. Higher burden than what, say, a large landowner has had to pay in the past, you know, that four hundred dollars an acre. It, and when you do the math, really equates to a very small chunk of, of the overall tax base. And when you factor in the number of large parcels pinned down, um, you know, I would think that. Probably forty to fifty percent of the town is owned by a handful of people that. Pay substantially less amount, share, I'm not saying share, not amount, but share of the tax burden. And I think that's the one thing that's really hitting people the most is the dramatic increase in the land value. Because, I mean, it's, it's been a, a thing that people have said, it makes no sense for me to put my property into tree growth. Or into farmland or open space because it's only four hundred dollars an acre, you know, so they're looking at like, it's, it's not worth my time. To go through all the hassle and then have to pay those penalties to pull it out because I'm really not paying that much and, and. It's, it's really unfortunate that this hasn't been a gradual buildup so that it wasn't so. Cause I mean, when, I mean, when I built my house in twenty eighteen, I, you know, you build it and they value it at seventy percent of what you paid for it. Then I go, I understand about the mechanic fall situation where you were at one fifty or whatever.
I don't think I, I don't personally have never, and still to this day, own, own a piece of property that's valued anywhere near what you could really sell it for. So I mean, I think seventy, like, that's much more realistic than.
Which is partly why we got away with what we had for as long as we did, because I came here in twenty, came back here in twenty sixteen, seventeen, whatever. And the values were at that seventy percent threshold, we looked at them versus, you know, what you could get them appraised at. And then all this happened, you know, we're talking about the market could go down, but. You made that adjustment and the houses are now assessing what they are, but if the market, and I'm not saying it will, but if the market continued to climb. Because these state numbers are two years behind, so the state numbers from two years ago are saying we're at two oh eight, right? So there's still two years of insane sales prices that are gonna hit those state numbers that they're gonna use to factor in that data for the next two years. So, two years from now, what your assessment's at could be at eighty percent before the market. If it adapts or whatever, before that, our adjustments factor into the state valuation. But the A valuation is what drives everything and we have to be between that seven eighty, ten seventy.
Yes.
Thank you, man, a really good comment there as far as, let's say, being in tree growth, somebody who has fifty acres. And looks at it at four hundred dollars an acre, I'm not gonna put it in tree growth, but this year it goes up a little bit, this year goes up a little bit. And then that person has the opportunity to go, you know what, I'm gonna put it in tree growth, so if a year ago, everybody knew that their property value was gonna go from. Four hundred to two thousand, a lot of people would have put it in tree growth, but nobody expected that, so people didn't have the time to. So that's, that's a real kick, yeah.
And, and, you know, the sixty-six sales that you discussed earlier and, and the two thousand dollar figure that they came up with, um, for our property in town. I'm glad they didn't give it to you as far as that, because there was at least twenty lots that sold at four thousand dollars plus an acre. Can you imagine what, I mean, to go from four hundred dollars to four thousand dollars an acre? So we're kind of in the middle of where it's been, um. So. I don't really have any.
Trustworthy, well, I don't think there's really much to, I just, I, I feel like my personal opinion is, is that the taxes in Buckfield are. Were kind of high, Buckfield, you know, when you look at, at Jason Towns, we, I have a friend of mine. He brings, you know, all, whole, even Poland, you know, the taxes are pretty high in Buckfield. So to think about what the mill rate has to do to be in any realm of realities, just. Cause like, I do understand, we, the values, the value, you have a budget that costs this much money. It, it, it all has to work out, it's, I think a lot of people are frightened about what the mill rate is gonna be, because. But again, on my road, cutting it half is gonna double, triple almost all my neighbor's taxes.
And we bought our land two years prior to the two years.
Hmm, yeah.
And we paid a thousand dollars an acre.
Yeah.
So, now, so I went like, where's that data? Like, you know, that's, we, like, that's real. And whether we could sell it for. Three thousand dollars a acre now, or it, it's, I don't know, it's.
That's the complicated part of everything, right, because. The states, I, I, it's, the, the complication in Buckfield is the lack of businesses. And a limited number of.
Well, I don't think it really is though, we have, like, last year, we had a budget, we all paid ex on all the taxes and it funded the town. And it funded the school and it funded the group commission and funded the whole town, you know, so I don't.
Yeah, you could argue it actually makes it less complicated.
Yeah, cause I think the draw of Buckfield is about the plan of buying four hundred dollars an acre, like, those are things that are, uh. Maybe not even think of a town as a business, but it, it is, so it's a draw to people.
And, and you just brought up, I mean, that, I, what you just said is exactly what I, what, what I'm saying is. There's an inequitable distribution of tax dollars currently, so what you're gonna find is. These people that live in these older houses, if you look at their assessments and what theirs going up, because, I mean, they're older houses that. Their roofs are failing and stuff like that, their testicles are most likely going to go down. Because they, they've been funding more of the services in town than the people. That, that need, you know, it's only assessed with two hundred and seventy-three thousand, so, you know, I, I, I don't even begin to know. What you guys, you know, are feeling, but, you know, even if I factor in a mill rate a little bit less. Than what you were factoring into your property, you know, mine are going up considerable even on my two acres and my. A single level ranch house, and that shows me that I wasn't. Paying my equitable share to the, you know, I'm trying to see it from all sides. Cause if we kept it as business as usual. I hear it all the time, Mount Town, you're gonna, you're gonna push out the, the people that are on fixed incomes, you're gonna push out the people who only have so much money. And the reality is if we continue to do this. We were gonna push up, they were gonna get pushed out because of a system that really, it it it. It made it this into this mechanic talk, right? Disadvantageous for them, the today were. It's like.
It's at eight thirty, so if we wanna continue. Uh, so we'll make a motion to continue. Uh, till end of business.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor, Baba? Peter I.
Sandra I.
And and I agree with you, Cameron, that like. There, you know, what our house. What, like, we were, we were not paying taxes. I was trying to insinuate that a book, no, 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 I'm just. Expected. But I also can look at houses on. These car, whatever we're calling these property cards. Can say that this guy is telling me that a view is based on just the buildable law. And I will take our twenty-five-hundred square foot house and move it. To a different location and I bet it would be appraised at a third of what it was. So there are properties that are just being, it it's the overall, like, you can't say that the house isn't being penalized. For the view, or for the setting, or for the. I mean, we have an eight by twelve shed. That I built out of leftover building materials that was valued at twenty-three thousand dollars because it matches our house. It's absurd, like, it's absolutely absurd.
In that case, I. I would say go forward. Because.
I I mean, we came and sat with the guy, I didn't, just, I'm not just affecting.
But the number, was there any change?
He just, he just sat there and said, yeah. Yeah, he wrote like two things down, maybe. Uh. So I I have, I I feel no faith that. There's a. I don't know, the higher you have to go to talk to something, if we have to talk to the state, I'd lose faith even more than I have now. If I, if we have to talk to. This kind of like. I I don't know, I believe this.
From here, I I don't understand the man.
Oh, yeah.
But so the abatement process is that at some point K R T says, we're done, here you go, you can deal with it. And I haven't run much research into what the abatement process is from there, but if someone feel. Feels that there is an error. Of this. God, the shed. Um, is perhaps. And there was an error made. Do we know what the next step is?
And at any point, if there's an error on a property card, they can come in and speak with, well, the company would be man. To review the account and see what's on there that doesn't. That either something's listed as it's not. Um, the problem is it's not an error. So it's.
But I guess I wanna know, like, if I had the same exact shed behind my house. Or. We have a. A building on our property, um. Why would it be valued at more or less? Than yours?
So, and the reason I I want to be able to see the property card is because you and I have discussed this and I've discussed with everybody, like, it's easy for me to figure out what they assigned. Figure land value, that's.
Oh, I think it's one hundred percent, I agree.
Uh. You've got the building value and then you've got extra features, which is typically your sheds, your patios, your. Whatever, uh, and what, like, figures specifically, I see they've got the pool. A shed and a patio listed. So that that extra building value, which I can't see the breakdown. I'm assuming, did you get a copy of your card when you came and talked to him or?
No.
So that overall extra building value is based off of your pool.
And not just the shed.
Yeah, your pool, your patio, which I think might be what's around your pool, or do you have another patio back on the shed? And then, um, they've got the sh- the shed listed as well. So it's a it's a combination of the three, but once we get. Once they hand the database over to us, I can actually generate that, I can pull up that card and I can see what did they assign your pool, what did they assign your shed? And what did they assign the patio? So then we'll be able to actually figure out, we can nail it down to where those errors might be. This online one is just. It tells me what they picked up, but it doesn't tell me what that equates to your overall value. Uh, and that manual we was talking about would, because you can see, like, series is pat one, shed one. There there's a meaning, each one of those has, it's a code that they use that that manual will explain, and I I don't understand them yet. So it kills me to not be able to look at this and tell you exactly what I'm looking at because.
It's stressing everybody out.
It's stressing me out, knowing.
Okay, all you, like, all I, all you can do is say, okay, it's this much square footage, I can look at these. Fifteen houses that have the same amount of square footage. That have a different setting, like, I I'm, again, I love our, but we're very fortunate. But that's irrelevant. And. It's like somewhat partially subjective, I just.
I I believe that once, once I, we have access to that database too, because everything has a code, so your house style will have a code. And we'll be able to narrow it and then go based off your house style and just generate everything that we see in town, and then you can look at it comparatively and see. Other than trying to kind of like, yeah, this is great, this is awful trying to figure it out.
And if something is really out of line, it's important to all of us.
And we're actively reviewing all of the accounts. Manny's actually been going through, uh, since Monday, reviewing accounts one by one. To see if anything sticks out from what he can see.
Yeah.
And then he's gonna go back and double check it once we actually get the database so that we can.
Can it, what does units mean?
That that'd be square feet, so four miles, that'd be ninety-six square feet, and then pools, they just cross as one.
And say it's a tiny pool.
It's one, this.
That's why I thought, he's, I remember saying. You have a, a building down by your, like, he praised it as the building. But maybe it's because. It's all, you're saying that's all, not just one.
In the, in the sheets that are online and those property cards and the data, it, that that number is all off. On on your property card, it's broken down by.
So people die from it now?
Some do.
There are some.
Not many.
Not many, they were, they were, okay, they were properties that were.
The house itself.
They were, the house itself was a bad sheet.
Property of mine.
Yeah, but.
So it didn't look like a venture.
There's also some, you know, that only slightly increased because of. However, they did their market analysis, so, you know, where. What do you say the average was? The average was a hundred and ten, but that's a big window of.
So an older home on, that has not been improved upon on a very small piece of land. Probably. It may have seen a decrease, if it was an increase, it was very reasonable because.
Yeah, I didn't see a a ton, and I haven't gone through it as much as Manny has, but I didn't see a ton that had actually gone down, maybe a handful. What 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 I saw was. There were, not a lot, but there were some of the older properties that only bumped a little bit. Uh, and even the prices that they're assessed at, I I would. I mean. But that's just from, I mean, everything's agreed, so a newer house is gonna be assessed higher than an older house. A remodeled house is gonna assess higher than a house of similar age. But then over time, it's gonna depreciate a little bit, and then if it falls into a category where just nothing gets approved eventually. It depreciates to a certain point where it's, it's a stone wall and it doesn't really increase until the market changes it. But. Next one, we're beginning to. Trying to understand it yet, not without all the data in front of me.
All of that by himself, fixed income, and where do people build a brand new house and. A big piece of land, uh. I think as a community, we should be somewhat cautious about punishing people who. Add value to community. I think that's a common thing in our society now, is. Those who take care of things and do things right are punished for it. I think that's something to think about as a community too. Cause I have, I rip all my side off, freaking vehicles, find your own place in there.
Well, I know, but like, I mean, clearly, if this guy drove around on a cloudy day. Like, there are avenues, we don't have a view, right?
It gets funky up there.
So, I, it it's just kind of.
It's, it's a tough one, right? Because anybody with windows has a view. And what you, what I like is the view is very different than what you're liking, it's a view.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What yours you'll pay for is not, right, it's. So I'm still, I'm curious.
What makes you? I just want to know what it looks like when this comes back to you. Like, what what does this process look like when this comes? The overall, you know, brief, cause I don't know what percentage of people came and.
There there was, because originally they were. Well, they signed an e- an an extension basically with them, allowing them to go to the third, because they were supposed to deliver on the ninth. Um. And they're doing hearings right through the twenty-nine. Uh, he was here yesterday from eight in the morning until three thirty was his last appointment. And the people were in and out the whole time. So I, I mean, I've seen. I haven't been in here, but I can see him from the cameras and I've seen. I would say the higher end of the percentage of the town coming in and, and which I like to see because I wanna make sure that people are letting. Are going through the process and having these conversations and. I mean. I don't know everything about everybody's house, but I can tell you, I've identified some issues that I brought to K R T's attention, but like, this isn't right, it's, it doesn't even have this, you know. Got full basements listed for houses that are built on top of.
Yeah.
And this is where we have to, to work together. And when these final numbers come out, we all look at everything. And advocate for, advocate for the older person who maybe can't advocate for themselves. We have to say, wait.
I wanna reiterate, I know it's not your fault.
Well, as a whole town, we've got ourselves in this situation.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna keep, keep the moment. I don't, I think. Yeah, I get the current person, like, that I spoke with, saying changing your house from a slum to a decent is gonna really make a rat's bum a difference, I think. The appraisers are. Probably what we would all get in a high dream world right now, if the right person came along.
But to pay the mill rate, you take all of this information and you put it into this math formula. And we get what we get, and there's a. Certain amount of, what's the range? They give the range change form?
You must see that, when they fill out the N B R, which is twelve pages long, with all the data that needs to be entered into it. There's a work hook up, I mean, there's a a calculation sheet on the back.
So none of that is subjective, so all of this data goes in.
So that sheet, once all the information is put into budgets, what needs to be taxed in order to generate the revenue, you get a range for a mill rate.
Basically, three numbers she needs to choose from. It's fine, that's low, when it's been, when it's.
Well, that's what was presented to you. There's actually, it's like a slider, right? So you wear the lowest you can have with no overlay, which means if you have abatements. As long as you have the approved, read that, it's all coming out of your mouth, you need an overlay because errors and omissions, you know, mistakes happen, so if a baby needs to be paid. Really, the overlay is, you know, it's to make up for errors. But there's a scale and you can, the the assessor, or at the time, assessors would. Figure out where does that overlay need to be? Boom, that tells you exactly what the mill rate is. So it could, I'm just gonna use two hypothetical numbers, these are not anywhere. I'm just.
Well, like, crazy, like.
Fourteen, right? So so if it said fourteen is your low. You could, the sheet would say, but you could go as high as fourteen fifty-five, so you know, there may be a fifty cent. Range of fluctuation, but it gives you a ballpark idea and then the assessor is the one that commits and says, this is what we need, they sign off and stuff.
And our assessor is.
Well, right now, it's Ken.
So Ken makes that final decision, could it be with the input of the community and the board?
And you can, as certified assessors through the state, you know, there's a process that they have to comply with and. I mean, it's kind of like talking to an accountant, you know, listening to him talk, because, you know, they they're very. Their their numbers driven, they have a set of laws and a set of rules that they have to follow, they have to be fair. Again, that's a subjective.
But just so people can be aware of the process as it goes on.
Right, I mean.
I think that's what I'm hearing, is that people wanted to the best of.
They have, they have to attest to a true, a true adjusted value of the town. So they're putting their name and their their license or certification on the line, because at the end of the day, they have to answer to the state. Assessor, and even though he's from Massachusetts, he is a certified main assessor four, which. I mean, Colin was a one, Clint was a two, so I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes into this, a lot of. He can't just passively throw out subjective numbers, he has to attest that this is a true and accurate statement of the assessed value.
Okay, so overall values, it goes into a formula, and then the range to choose from is. Within a point?
I'd say, I'd say in the last, I mean, the overlays really was gonna, what's gonna determine what the final. Decision is between between those two numbers and. The last couple of years, the overlay has been between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars, but that sheet allows us to go up to a hundred and fifty. I don't, there's no way I ever think that this town would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of overlay. But you'd think two years ago, because of the tree growth issues, we paid fifty-eight thousand dollars in abatements because. Of a database issue that didn't migrate, right? So you've gotta have something there to. Account for any errors, not necessarily human errors, but, you know, system errors, just, you know. And then if the commitment comes out and there is a legitimate mistake. I mean, the basement situation, essentially, you'd be, you'd be surprised at how much a basement will add to a, to a property from what I've seen, but, um. You know, somebody's being classified as having a basement or a sixteen by sixteen garage. Then. And they don't, I mean, that is a valid abatement and through that process. They wouldn't owe that tax, or if they paid that tax, they'd get that tax money back. So. Um. Yeah, I I don't know so much.
Do you have a question, Mark?
Absolutely. K R T is a assessor that that assesses. More than twenty towns here in the state, I mean, so they're not unknown. So I don't, I know sometimes they're like, yes, she was, they do all of them. Um, they did Oxford. If you want to, you can go onto Oxford's. Web page and the better first thing you gotta do, you gotta find out when did Oxford's assessment get up, because if we're gonna look. At numbers, we gotta look at taxes to happen, so how this forms, if they did it in twenty-eleven. These assets are gonna be very different than aren't being done in twenty twenty-four because of. The sales and all that kind of stuff, but it'll give you an idea that you took all, they've got big cities and small towns that they've done on, so.
Twenty twenty-three.
So it's Oxford, so maybe, pretty, that should be pretty, so you can look at. Stuff that might have.
They did Sullivan, man, in twenty twenty-three.
Oxford, Dalton.
Winslow, they're currently working on. I mean, Camden and Rockport, obviously, those are outliers and not really like Buckville, but. Walden.
But but definitely, I mean, I encourage all of you to. When the cards come out, go look at your card, I mean, I've worked with some of those numbers and some people I went, that's what you heard. Others, I went, I don't understand that. There's a property that has seven acres. But they want you to cooperate at like twenty, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the land, and I'm like. What the heck do they see? You know, Googled it, it was like. Hey, that's just a road, I'm not, I don't understand, I don't understand why that one is, it's not on the top of the map, it's all king. You know, but it's seven acres, an X lab.
What you're looking at, should we have been watching?
Towns they did and then the parcel size, I mean, they've done towns as big as twenty-eight thousand park. But that's in New Hampshire. And this is the list as of twenty twenty two, so I'm. And I know there's, there's been hiccups in Oxford, there's been hiccups in Cape, there's gonna be hiccups with all. Anywhere they do it, not just them, I'm sure O'Donnell. I did reach out to O'Donnell about assessing and then this was as a town manager after the fact. I was told that when O'Donnell takes over to be an assessor, to be an assessor for a town, that. He starts with a complete rebuild and we were already three quarters of the way through our rebuild. So. Would he have been cheaper or a better option? I'm not sure. Um. Fine size twenty twenty, I don't know, but I didn't know that. But, you know, in. However, many years when the select board decides how to plan out the future of when this needs to be done again, you know, that's information that. If you can go through that process. They would be an option. And then when I send out our pieces now, I send them out to people and I post them. Because I found that if you don't send them out to people, you oftentimes don't get many responses. So I typically try to send anything I do, I try to send to five different vendors. And then I posted or, you know, because I want to get as much as I can because honestly, that's the best way to use taxpayers too is, you know. You're working people against each other to try and get to maximize the best cost for the town. I don't know how this one is though. I just know we're doing it all again.
Yes, Martha?
The other thing is, is as much as it hurts right now, if the market does turn, which everybody says is gonna. If it does, you don't have to do a full assessment over again. We needed to, because it had, it wouldn't even finish up. The original assessments and the staff was bad. Horrible, difficult to say. So now we could just do a mini assessment. So it would, it would be a readjustment of the values. By square footage and that kind of stuff, and that can make a significant change as well. What were you planning?
Our old, our old method of assessment was. Even if there wasn't much of a method to it, it seemed, it was very similar to what you're talking about, you know. Take your house and put it in a different spot and all of a sudden it seems like it's valued differently, but especially when it came to like building, building lots, it seemed like. You could have four houses on the same dead end, dead road, and every one of them had a different assessment for the first acre, but there was no way to understand a lot.
And.
Yes.
And as an assessor that was on those boards, if you questioned. You were voted down. And it went through and it happened year after year after year. So this is why we're.
I think we just need to remember that everything in life has a value. And I feel like there's a lot of people who. Are gonna be in a position where. The values are, it's just not worth that kind of expense. And so just keep that in mind because. You start thinking about paying fifteen, sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars a year property taxes to live in Botsfield. It's.
Well, that's one way to get its often values down, it's the staff insanity, property tax on it. But and it's trying to make house worth less. It's kind of.
I told, I don't know who showed me, but I told Cameron a quick story. We lived for, uh, for eight years and we were, we was everything that came up. And I looked at ninety eight, it's a million dollar, it was over looking way down. And I sat in the town twice because I was at a business owner and the house is on. And my apartment actually was gonna be about thirteen thousand dollars a year, like I spent a lease for like, it's, it's not like thirteen thousand dollars a year, the house that I bought paid for. And that doesn't appear to be even somewhat realistic. So it's. Very stressful. Just as stressful as somebody's taxes, well, eight hundred, two thousand, it's the same thing, but.
How much did? Taxes go up this year? The school, um, I, roughly. Of last year. The the amount that we need to raise through taxation.
Two hundred and. Thirty five thousand dollars.
So they need to come up with two hundred and thirty five, this town needs to come up with two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars more than it did last year. Which. And that's all for the schools in the county. So it's just how those taxes are distributed almost.
Well, and that's the reality, right? Because then next year, it's the same, the public school system is gonna bankrupt the country. It's about, I was gonna say it.
So I was.
So next year, the same shit we're actually gonna keep on, next year, the same thing's gonna happen. And then next year, the same thing's gonna happen. And now that one point is on. Eight hundred thousand to three hundred thousand or. A good friend of mine is eight thousand and three ninety. You know, it's. It's every single year. It's not just this year.
Right, no, it it will go up some next year, but it's just. The question is how. If if everything stayed equal. We would all have the same percentage increase. But some of us are going to see a greater increase. Than others because values of our properties and homes will not more. Than others.
They have a lookout for at least a dollar per thousand for every taxpayer. That increase. So.
Yeah, so then that's the next piece, how do we get together and look at? Do we have any control over the county? Do we have any control over the school? What do we want to do? How can we be involved in that? And then what are we going to do about the needs of the town? Because we can't. We're not gonna be able to stay flat, I don't think, be able to stay. So many grants we can find.
Well, and with that said, that's a good segue for the school situation. They have a meeting on the ninth, uh. The high school and, um. I know this board is signing a letter that we discussed at another meeting. Trying to straighten to rotate the annual budget meeting. I mean, whether it has an impact or not. Is irrelevant. I think all. The residents of. The RSU. Should share in the travel of of thirty five mile more distance than that, uh. It would be nice to see people show up at those meetings before it goes to the vote at town meetings. To shoot down budgets that they feel are unacceptable because this year we had five residents from Buckfield, two of which were school board members at that meeting. And it passed. And that's what we voted on. We shot it down as a town, but, um.
But it's, what you're saying is, by by attending earlier. On the. On the earlier side, that will impact the actual budget because once it goes to the vote. Buckfield Hartford Summer can say no, it's still.
It really is the last point to you, that that Buckle Hartford and Summer are gonna have any sort of voice in that process is that that budget meeting. It functions just like open floor town meeting. So they have the budget, here it is, yay or nay? And traditionally, it's just yay, and then that's what we vote on. And there's not a lot of, I've seen school board members bring up valid questions and nothing really comes of it. But for residents to show up and vote that down and say, hey, enough of the knock. It's gonna take more than five people. And if it's held in the bucket, maybe more people would be willing to go and drive all the way over to Rondberg, at least a real year.
We'll rent a bus.
Yeah, September, September ninth at the high school, they have a meeting, I can't remember the time, but.
We'll find out and send it out in an email. Right, and then.
Any other, how about one second?
She's been sitting here patiently waiting.
Oh, yes.
So I did send all of you an email as well as the road committee. There is a drainage issue up on Ty Street. I have, I have proposed to Julia what. We can do or what I see needs to be done up there. Uh, I did talk to. Mark Fox, they did receive the email that I sent and I'd like to go out and look at it before they. Give me what their opinion is, but I just didn't want her to think that I hadn't spoken to all of you about the situation. So to answer your question, Julia, we're still working on coming up with an answer, um.
So there is, there's covered, uh, in my property. For a long break, now, this is, and, um. Start looking at bottles coming out from the street, uh, water. So there is a lot of contamination on my property. And I. I, um. I made a recipe, like, you know, like a herbal recipe, and I'm glad with, uh. You know, plant a lot. Uh, there's there, but if it's contamination, I can't even use that property and plus. Um. All this water goes to the creek that comes from North, uh, pond and it goes to the, uh, township. And, um. And it's a lot of trash coming out. And plus, for sixteen years, they didn't, uh, fly those pipes. So now they're all rusty, um. I prefer more setting mega. Um. Um. Like a covers over like maybe like on the. Property like between the, um. Um. Vias, I, but it's sort of, you know, called, yeah, so. Dryways, um. And also, um, there. Um. It is, it's, it's kind of like, um, how, how's it called, like this, like?
The catch basin?
Yeah, actually it's siding down and a lot of cars on in there with. On the, and plus, um. But, but he told me that there was, uh, actually. Uh, because everything was plugged and everything gets rusty, there is no there, uh, cause, um. If they. Let it go straight to the my basement. So now I have even pictures, I have a lot of moldings in my basement and this is. Actual foundation for my house and there's this. Uh, old bee, uh, beans and it's over, over a hundred years old house. So there's old beans that start falling down from those, uh. Uh, mold stuff and I was, I tried to, and you know, like a spray this mold and I felt like. Caramel. So I'm just kind of like. Uh, I need that, you know, it's, it's every day when it's raining, it's. Again, mold and stuff, so I'm just asking, I, I, I have, I, I've been that like asking. Last year too, but now it's getting really bad. It's just. Not believable.
Okay, yes, Andrew.
So Cameron, am I hearing you say that you have somebody looking into. What the town is responsible for and coming up with a plan. On how to repair what the town is responsible for.
So I've had multiple conversations with Julia, um. I even went out with Preston and and looked at what was going on. So at some point. I don't know when, the town redid High Street and then they filled in the deep ditches on the. The right side of the road if you're heading up towards North Buckville. And put in catch basins, which come down in front of Julia's property. There's a catch basin that has a pipe that runs. Out into the woods. Now by pipe, I mean. Fourteen steel culverts going out into the woods. It hadn't been flushed in a while, um, the back. Two culverts, uh, it looked like had either been drinking over or just rotted off. Anyways, they were damaged.
So this is on her property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so those, those were removed. And the fire department went down to flush out, or to try and flush out the catch basin. And at some point it just.
It's, it's clear. I mean, there's only a certain amount of proof that kills us. But the pipe coming down the property as of right now, it's clearly just flowing. I think the thing about it, she was ready to have a sand problem, so. A woman, but as of right now, but like she said, there is a hole in the bottom of the culvert facing the house, but it's a small hole, so.
And it's a lot of coal and I can show nature, like, like. It's, it's out of proportion and it's just not believable, but we need to walk there.
So what I, what I told you, then what I shared with all of you via that email, because I gave you as much information as I could. Uh, you know, those old steel culverts, you know, the bottoms are, are, are. Most of the culverts in town are probably rotted down, but when you get rapid flowing water, you're not losing a lot of water underneath it. It's, it's going to the path of least resistance, which is down the culprit. So. From the town standpoint. My opinion is the only real liability that we have and our responsibility would be if those, if those culverts are compromised, then we need to replace those culverts and replace them where they are with. The plastic ones. And if there's a hole like what Adam is maybe. Look about fixing that hole. However, what I think is going on is she's got an old house with drainage issues. It's got a dirt basement and, um. A rock foundation. And no matter what the town does, it's not gonna solve her problem with the water getting in her basement. Like she's asked me. Why the town can't. Tear up my street and run a culvert from that side of the road to the other side of the road. Taxpayer standpoint, I don't see how that makes sense. Um, I think replacing the culverts is the best option, but I've asked the road committee for their opinion. That's why they want to go and look at it. I've asked for your opinion. I wanted you to be aware of what was going on, um, at this point. Until I really have a solution, there's not much I can do. I mean, I sent the fire department up to flush it, Adam did it. It's flowing water, um, at a minimum. I know the back two culverts need to be replaced, but. That was put in there a long time ago and. I get where she's coming from, from the standpoint of I bought this property and I, I didn't give you permission, but somebody gave permission a long time ago. It's there, um. But, yeah, I'm just trying to get insight from everybody because I'm not a real guy.
No, I think we need to identify what the town is responsible.
Yeah.
And we need to make good on what we are responsible.
Yeah.
Um, so if, if it's gonna be woods there, um. Still, and they still gonna be trash coming out and contaminating property. And it's lost contaminates the squeak that is moving those to there, um. Does it, I mean, like, um, old Buckville. But is that work?
Right, so. So.
Unfortunately, I don't.
Yeah.
We can't control.
It's gonna be a lot of, it's, 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 so unfortunately, you ask the most.
Generally, that's a lot of it, yeah, I was worried when she goes spring, pick up trash, yeah.
I'm just thinking like, if it's like both sides, um, of the road, it's, it's, we, um, make like a. Um, holes, not holes, but. Um, which is. And, um. And then it's probably problems can be resolved and it's on the property, not gonna be any, um, you know, like a salt. Sand and you, you saw how much sand it was just. Only my property, just from those pipes coming out, it's, it's no way I can use this land for my herbs. I finished medical school back in Russia, but you know, uh. Now I cannot do nothing, this is property because it's contaminated, it won't follow.
Martha, Martha? Interesting question. The, when they filled in those ditches, um. There could be parking for the funeral. Is what they, they didn't say that that would be recent, it was done. They told the town that those would be taken care of, that those would be flushed on a regular basis, so they wouldn't get blocked. Who's then, who's telling the town, the board? The board and the town manager and, and I don't believe they were ever flushed. Soon as when this one's, it's not gonna block this truck, so I'm. But that was done, I would say, I would have to think are. Twelve to fourteen, two thousand twelve to fourteen is when that. But that was done, I would say, I would have to think our twelve to fourteen, two thousand twelve to fourteen is when that happened. And that was a very big concern to the people on that street, they ditched incredibly low on most of the sides, so it was like, how many people are gonna fall into the ditch? And then they put those culverts in, and they have never been flushed, they're not, I don't.
I mean, I grew up on High Street, I, those ditches were deep.
Yeah, and they were deep.
To, and to, I mean, there's other concerns too about. The catch basins are in the ground, so it would be a huge undertaking to pull up those catch basins, re-dish the side of that road. And then you're also running right online, in line with the, uh, the water line as well. So I, I just.
How many homes are having water issues on this side of the street? Because I believe the, when the ditch was carved over, it's ready for, um, right before the apartment. Yeah, if I can, what a block in that basin, face of the house, you're gonna eliminate all the water going down there. You dig that ditch out, just those two seconds of the road, it's probably cheaper than replacing all that culvert, you're just gonna get rid of waste material. You get rid of the culvert going that way, you get rid of the water coming off the road going down into her property also.
But there's a lot to ask the road committee from taking.
So I, I think it's important that. And we go back and, and do the research, and ultimately, what the town decides they want. The community wants to spend money next for the roads, but anything that we are responsible for. We've all thrown that, but it sounds like we need some more information before we can. Make a plan that. Timeline for getting that information to something we can.
Your school tomorrow.
Okay, but I mean, like. Four weeks.
I, I, I don't, I don't know. I, I, I would assume in four weeks I would have an answer, but it doesn't mean that four weeks of all the money. But you'll have your information, right, well, and the reason I bring that up is. I, I, I get where Julia's coming from, but she wants something done right now, and, but. Depending on the solution, I don't know if that's possible.
It's, it's mold, it's, it's not, it's still that.
Until the drainage issues, the houses are addressed, whatever we do is not gonna fix that problem.
But that's right, what we need to do is identify what we are responsible for and what. What the options are, and then the community can decide. Which way forward is for, for anything that we are truly responsible for, and then beyond that, bigger issues, ditching. It would be what the community wants to do.
If it ends up being replaced in those culverts that are there, I'd send you the estimate, some between fifty-seven and. Eighty-five hundred dollars, because there's like fourteen, fifteen sections of culvert there, and that's just the plastic.
So we don't have a good answer for you today, but we are definitely gonna look into it.
My, I, I have a question, well. I, I believe that any town should have emergency money to, um. If there's any, I mean, this is. I, I saw, I saw, like, when you go on the. Uh, road, um. Over the spring, and there's like a five different, uh, thing, they've been like. Covered already, uh, with pipe without no insulation, and that is not, uh, not even water, you know, goes to the basement or. In the houses, uh, there is one house that is wooden, just goes to the, um. Property, but this is totally different, this is like a foundation of a whole house. Right now, and, uh, in this, you're right. And, um. I believe it's need to be done something very soon.
And, and once we get some more information back on it, we'll certainly see what we have to do. Un- unfortunately, we do, we need more information before we can move forward, and our, uh, emergency contingency money is very limited. And, you know. What I love to say, oh yeah, we'll go over there and do all, all these things, yeah, but I don't. And until we know more, there's just, I can't do anything to that.
You know, I know it, some, uh, some, they start, they, it, the course, it doesn't, it just only goes. To the different side of the road, but it is like a different. More severe. And unusual, you know, because basement.
Right, no, I understand, I understand, we wanna move on it, but we just need to gather information, and that's what Cam's gonna work on, so that we can. See what we have to do. I'm sorry, it's, unfortunately, not much happens fast with, uh, government. So, we, we, you know, we wanna help, you know, and, and take care what we're responsible for.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry.
I don't want to see your basement wet.
For any other, other business? You know? All right, I will make a motion that we adjourn at nine fifteen P M.
I will second that.
Okay, all those favor? To now. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.